All recommended by the various department heads. Chair recognizes Consul Caviello for a recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I have reviewed the papers and they all appear to be in order. And if the people could come to-
Please present yourself and state your name and address for the record. Are you the petitioner?
Yes, my name is Simone Pacheco. I am 1123 Golden Street, Medford, and I represent Wellington's Victoria.
Mr. President, all papers seem to be in order and recommend approval. And I thank the young lady for having the faith to open a business in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I agree. So on the motion of Consul Caviello, seconded by Consul Falco, all those in favor? All those opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
License is approved.
Thank you.
Also before our 16-353, petition for common visual license by Amanda Zokko, 35 Village Road, Middleton, Mass., for Fitness Refreshments Incorporated. Doing business as Juiced Cafe, 4,000 Mystic Valley Parkway, Medford, on file. Business certificate number 077. Building Department, Fire Department, Police Traffic Impact, and Health Department approvals. Letters from the Treasurer, letter of compliance, tax identification, workman's comp, and completed petition. Chair recognizes Consul Caviello.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Chairman of the Licensing Committee.
Thank you. Amanda, this is in Gold's Gym, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and Mr. President, I reviewed the papers and I find that they all appear to be in order, and I motion for approval.
On the motion for approval by Consul Caviello, seconded by Consul Falco, all those in favor? All those opposed?
And I thank you for having the faith to open it in our community.
Thank you.
Your license is granted. Congratulations. Thank you for doing business in Medford.
Thank you.
While we're into suspension, communication from the mayor, 16-354, to the Honorable President and members of the Medford City Council.
What kind of regular order of business?
On the motion of Consul Knight to revert back to the regular order of business, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion granted. Regular order of business offered by Consul Caviello be resolved that the Medford City Council, for the second time, demand that graffiti on the Bigelow Building on the corner of Forest and Salem Street be removed immediately. Consul Caviello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, you know, this is the second time I've asked for that property to be cleaned up. I mean, Forest Street is one of the busiest cities in our street. We have events at the Chevalier Auditorium. People are coming out of there, you know, talking about gateway of the city. If that's the gateway we want people to see, it's not making a very good impression. And, Mr. President, and also, if you'll notice, that now the building across the street is now being tagged. It is properties in West Medford, Central Avenue. I'd like to see our code enforcement officer, if I'm not mistaken, I think in our budget last year was a part-time code enforcement officer. Am I correct?
Yes, it was, sir.
Well, I'd like to see our part-time enforcement officer out on the street and picking up some of these obvious violations. You know, a couple of years ago, Consul Marks made a motion 14685 about maybe getting some funding for the, say, if the landlord, the weak, he get out there and pays them to do it ourselves. Obviously, that motion went nowhere. And again, you know, again, the Forest Street one, it's the gateway to our city. As I say, people come down it, you have events at the Chevalier all the time, and I mean, it's up on the top there. I mean, it's by people's windows. I don't know why the people themselves who live in the building haven't complained. But again, if we can get the code enforcement officer to take care of that property and the other properties, and let them go around and start demanding that these businesses start cleaning up our city. I'm tired of listening to the people tell us how dirty our city looks.
Thank you, Consul. Consul Falco.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank Consul Caviello for bringing this forward a second time. I think it's important, especially with people tagging and putting up graffiti, that, you know, we're persistent and we stay on top of this. Because if you let it go, it just leads to more and more tagging throughout the community. Consul Caviello is correct. It's happening throughout the community. I have received a number of calls about specific properties as well. On Spring Street, the corner of Spring and Washington, there's a business that's been tagged. If you take a look at, I think, Seven Canal, which has been a hot topic, that's a building that's been tagged when you come out of the parking lot in West Medford Square, you'll see that. And also on Riverside Ave, the back of the Sloan Building, if you take a look at the second floor, there's graffiti all along the side of that as well. So we really need to make sure that we get on top of this. It needs to stop, and we need to make sure that it stops right away before it gets out of control. Many people would say it's out of control now, so we really need to jump on top of this. And I thank Consul Caviello for bringing it forward.
Thank you, Consul.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Consul Marks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Consul Caviello is right. I think it was about two years ago, I offered a resolution, and it was based actually on the city of Somerville. The city of Somerville has a program that the city will have, whether it's private owner or a public building, they will have the owner sign a waiver form. And if the owner is unable to remove the graffiti based on financial means, the city will step in, as long as there's no liability from this waiver, and they'll remove the graffiti off the side of a home or a building and so forth. I think the one thing that I emphasized two years ago was that if I happen to own a business in the square, and someone comes up and tags the whole side of my building, and then the city the next day knocks on my door and says, "If you don't remove this graffiti, we're going to start fining you," I think that adds insult to injury. You know, the business owner, really, by no fault of their own, was tagged by someone, and, you know, it's a hardship, first of all. And that could be for any property owner, too. That could be your house, my house. If someone comes up and spray paints the side of my house, I may not have the means to have that removed immediately. And I think the city of Somerville offers a great service to the residents of the community to allow that service. And I believe it was two years ago that I asked that we be able to do our own graffiti removal, rather than rely on, right now, the Middlesex County Sheriff's Office does a bulk of our graffiti removal within the community upon request. So I'm not sure what the machinery cost, but I think it's worthwhile looking into. It's similar to what Consul Falco offered not too recently about the plowing of the sidewalks, Consul Scott Pelley about the porta potty, and other initiatives in the community that I believe, as a community this size, we should be offering, Mr. President. So I would ask my Consul colleague, if he wouldn't mind amending it, asking through his resolution once again, that the city administration look into buying the equipment for removal. Because again, I want to stress, I'm not in favor of going out and just start fining people that were under the unfortunate circumstance of having graffiti sprayed all over their building, or whatever might be your home. And I'm more in favor of having the city have an option that frees us from any liability that will remove graffiti. And I agree with Consul Falco and Consul, what's your name again?
Caviello.
Caviello. Consul Caviello, Mr. President, that, you know, the more you leave the graffiti out there, it's like the old broken window concept. And the neighborhood, it creates more broken windows. So I agree, we have to clean it up. But I just don't agree with going after the business owner or the homeowner if they're financially strapped, Mr. President.
On the motion by Consul Caviello, as amended by Consul Marks, Consul Caviello.
Exactly. I have no problem changing that for my counsel. You know, it's time we start investing in our community. This is a relatively small investment. It's not that it's on a million-dollar piece of equipment. So again, I'll support that motion to have the city vote and investigate the purchase of that piece of equipment, Mr. President.
On the motion approved by Consul Caviello, seconded by Consul Falco, Consul Falco.
Thank you, President De La Russa. If I may amend the resolution to include the properties that I mentioned earlier, that they be addressed as well, in addition to the Bigelow Building, if we could get the back of the Sloan-
As amended by Consul Falco to include the aforementioned additional addresses, which are, Consul?
Let's see. Sloan Building on Riverside Ave, the backside of the Sloan Building, Seven Canal, and I don't have the exact address, but I can get you the address. There's an address on Spring Street as well.
On that motion, Consul Knight.
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to amend the paper to request a report from the See Click Fix Program relative to the requests to remove graffiti.
An additional amendment by Consul Knight to request an update from the See Click Fix Program as to the number of graffiti removal reportings that they've had.
In locations, please.
In locations, if you could. Consul Marks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll just speak briefly on this, because I have a resolution under suspension. However, I did receive an email from a gentleman in the community that just used the See Click Fix website, and he reported graffiti on the Route 16 West sign. And it's spray painted with all black spray paint on it. And he used See Click Fix, and he got a response back within minutes saying, "Thank you very much for reporting your issue. However, that road is operated by DCR, and here's the phone number to DCR." And I'm not sure, my opinion of See Click Fix is, if you bring an issue to the city, they should work on that issue on behalf of the resident, and not just give the resident a phone number to call. Whether it's a state road or a city road, that should be the resident alerting the city of what needs to take place, and then the city take an action. But I'll speak to that later.
If you want, we can take these remarks with you on this resolution, and we can have you withdraw your motion under suspension.
I'd rather keep that, but where Consul Falco was talking about-
We're at such in vague form.
Other places that need graffiti removal. I would also add, the Route 16 West sign entering Medford now says, "Ernie Emi Mumi," because you can't read it. So I would ask that that be done, Mr. President.
Further resolution by Consul Falco. On the main motion, speaker at the podium, please know that you are welcome to state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Jean Martin, Comming Street. Thank you for bringing this up, Mr. Caviello. And I would just like to add that this is, generally speaking, a nighttime activity, so we can beef up patrols in the business districts usually. Usually it's mailboxes, signs, private store buildings. It's usually not houses, generally speaking. So we need to beef up security. But also, lighting can be added. We need to talk to the people that own these buildings, because if you add lighting to it, people are less likely to do it. And again, if the area is clean, it's not as contagious. It is a contagious activity, absolutely, without a doubt. If you see one beer bottle or one Pepsi can, you're likely to see another one and another one and another one. Same thing with graffiti or trash. So if we keep the area clean, too, which is part of our responsibility, that would help. But also, I think the arts community could be brought into this, and we can work with those people. And if the business is okay with some kind of mural, that would be good, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Martin. So on the main motion by Consul Caviello, as amended, on the motion for approval by Consul Caviello, seconded by Consul Falco, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. 16-351, offered by President De La Russa. Be it resolved that the Medford City Council congratulate Mr. Frederick Fred Forestier on the occasion of his upcoming 80th birthday. Fred has been a proud, lifelong Medford resident who raised eight children. If my colleagues will briefly indulge me to speak from the chair. Fred is a lifelong resident here in Medford, and on the 17th, he'll celebrate his 80th birthday. He grew up on Emerald Street and spent most of his life there, living on the Felsway, actually. And he worked for the Omaha Meat Packing Company before his retirement, devoted husband to his wife, Hertha, and together they raised eight children. Marie Forster, Bobby Nelson, Marie Forster, Bobby Nelson, Marianne DeVito, Fred Forestier, Frank Nelson, Cheryl Hanson, Joey Forestier, and Hertha Rocco. Freddie's known as Hun Dad Bampy and Freddie. He's loved by all of his 21 grandchildren and 10 great-grandchildren, and many friends and extended family members. He's very proud of being a Medford resident throughout his whole life, and he has many passions in life. First, his family, and second, to his dedication and support of Medford sports teams. And he's a great guy, a fun guy, and we're very proud of his lifelong residency here in the city and the Medford City Council. Fred wishes you a happy 80th birthday. Happy birthday. So on the motion of approval by Consul Falco, seconded by Consul Knight, all those in favor? All those opposed? Happy birthday, Fred. Communications. On the motion of Consul Knight to take papers in the hands of the clerk, all those in favor? All those opposed?
Mr. President, we have the papers this week.
Yes, we're going to read the papers in the hands of the clerk. Be it resolved that the Medford City Council Subcommittee on Zoning Ordinances meet regarding the administration's response to Council Paper 16-318 for the purpose of crafting a zoning ordinance change to Code 94-191 of the city ordinances. Consul Knight.
Mr. President, thank you very much. In our council packet this week, we received a response to Mayor Stephanie Muccini Burke from Palmoke, the building commissioner, in response to this council's inquiry as to recommendations relative to zoning ordinance 194-191. The intent of that particular division is to reduce congestion in the streets and to contribute to traffic safety by assuring adequate places for the standing and storing of off-street motor vehicles. Mr. President, we have a response that provides us with a number of different options here. And in the interest of due diligence and an open and transparent process, I'd like to call for a zoning and ordinance subcommittee, Mr. President, to review the response and to make recommendations to this August body as to changes in our zoning law to allow people to park in the front of their homes and change the current zoning ordinances that would call for 15 feet of frontage being required for the front yard of each home. So with that being said, Mr. President, I'd move for approval.
On the motion of approval, Consul Knight, seconded by Consul Marks, all those in favor? All those opposed? On the suspension, Consul Marks, be it resolved that the recently passed Community Preservation Act be discussed regarding the exemptions available to city residents. Consul Marks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just recently, within the tax bills, there was a letter sent out by the city of Medford explaining the recently passed Community Preservation Act for FY '17, fiscal year '17. And it goes on to state what the Community Preservation Act is, the amount of surcharge, which is 1.5% surcharge on your property tax bill, and for what purposes this money could be used, and the fact that, I know, there was an ad hoc committee chaired by Consul Knight that is working on creating an ordinance to govern the four members that will serve on this board, as well as some other issues. And the one thing that this letter did not explain, and I received several calls to date, is the fact that there is an exemption for seniors and low-income residents. And there's no mention within the letter made of that. I know Consul Longo Kern brought this up last week about how do you apply for this, and who is eligible, and so forth. And I think it's only appropriate that now we're going to be hitting up residents in their tax bill. We should equally let them know that there is an exemption available, and who to contact, what is the maximum, and low-income requirements, what are the qualifications, the household size, and so forth. So I would ask again that the administration provide, because I'm not sure if the committee has any, the ad hoc committee has any whereabouts with this particular function of the exemption. I know it's created under state law, but I'm sure there's a due date to file for an exemption, and I'm sure the law currently spells out, which I have a copy in front of me, the maximum and low-income levels that would apply. It says income is, it's only based on your income and not assets. So that's very important, Mr. President. Not everyone can afford to pay this additional surcharge. And I think it's only appropriate if it's available, and this is what was stated by the proponents during the last election, when this was a ballot question, that there will be an exemption, that we also promote the exemption to let people know what's going on, and for those people that are eligible, that they sign up and make sure they take advantage. So I just want to make sure that's out there and that we get a response from the city administration.
On the motion approved by Consul Marks, seconded by Consul Caviello, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Offered by Consul Marks, be it resolved that the See Click Fix Program be further discussed. Consul.
I won't repeat my comments, Mr. President. However-
Thank you.
The newly-created See Click Fix Program, which this council actually is on record, originally asking back three or four years that the city implement this program, is now up and functioning. And I was under the impression that residents, this would make it easier for residents through electronic means to get a hold of the city and to accomplish getting results on behalf of residents. And dismayed to hear that a resident already used this particular program and was told that they should contact the state to do away with some graffiti that's on a city, "Welcome to the City" of Medford sign that's in our city, but maybe falls on a state road. And I think that's, to me, what this whole process is supposed to be set up for, is to help residents in their search to get results in this community and not to pass the buck. So I would ask that we ask the administration that, in what regards will residents be asked to make contact outside entities, outside agencies? And should that be the responsibility of the city, whereas they use and see Click Fix to report something directly to the city? And I think it should fall under their scope of work to be done, Mr. President.
Constituency service.
Mr. President, thank you very much. And Consul Marks, thank you very much, because I concur 110% with what you're saying. We have individuals in City Hall that have a relationship with those in state agencies that have that so-called backdoor phone number that they can pick up and call and be connected to the government affairs liaison at these agencies, whereas a regular citizen would have to pick up the phone and go through the switchboard and then be bounced around from department to department until they get the right person on the phone, and then be told, "Oh, sorry, there's nothing we can do. We'll get back to you in a day, a week, a month, a year." Not hear anything. I think that the whole purpose and intent of the See Click Fix Program is to see it, to click it, and to fix it, not to see it, click it, and get a homework assignment to go fix it yourself. So with that being said, Consul Marks, thank you for bringing this issue forward. I support this measure wholeheartedly.
On the motion approved by Consul Marks, seconded by Consul Knight, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Consul, you have a citizen that wishes to speak on a matter?
Sharon D. S. O. 130 Circuit Road in Medford. Hello, everyone. We're a little bit into the new year now, and we're all thanking you for your time and your diligent work. I came down because I had a couple of issues on my mind during the last month or so. It came, I don't know if these commissions are appointed by the council or goes through the mayor's office. One bone of contention with a couple of my friends and my neighbors, this is not why we gather, but it happens to come up, was the shelter that's in Medford Square. I happened to address this issue by a short article of the transcript about a month ago and got some responses, you know, phone, et cetera. A $25,000 paid commission was going to be appointed for people to think about what could go there. We can't imagine that with the appointed officials, voted officials, you're all very worthy and very bright, or even, has it ever been suggested before these commissions are allotted this money in writing out these checks? We don't even know anyone who has been appointed to it yet. It's never appeared in the paper again. Maybe the public has ideas? Maybe there could be a cut-out session in the transcript of the Mercury where people could actually respond? What about the people who are actually paying for it? What would they deem to be needed there? Just a suggestion, in case you want to do something else with the $25,000, like put it towards the women's locker room at the police station. I mean, we're so appreciative of you, and we're not up here, and we trust you, we vote for you. What we don't see happening is the innovation of swapping of priorities of writing out the checks. Does that ever recur, you know, to anyone? We're laymen here. So on the note of the police station, we'd like to know the status right now of the building itself. What's going forward? What's happening? I also learned, I think, in certain areas, Mr. President, you can build up. If the building is salvageable, it looks to me like the bricks are all intact on the outside. I'm sure we have great people in our engineering and building department who could go down there and estimate the exterior structure. Why can't it be salvaged? Why can't we build up if we need more room? So we'd just like to know the status of the big shelter $25,000 commission project and what's actually happening with the police station. Thank you so much.
Now that we have no business left, yes, on the motion of Consul Knight to revert to the regular order of business, 16-354, to the Honorable President and members of the Medford City Council, City Hall, Medford, Mass., 02155. Dear Mr. President and City Consulars, I respectfully request and recommend that your Honorable Party approve the appropriation from Certified Free Cash in the amount of $281,888 for the replacement of self-contained breathing apparatus, SCBA, for all firefighters. The city has applied for a federal grant for assistance to firefighters from the Department of Homeland Security for 90% reimbursement. The federal grant awards begin this in the fall. If the city has awarded the grant either in whole or in part, the amount of the grant funding will be returned to Free Cash. The balance in Certified Free Cash prior to this vote is $8,969,663. And to explain this lovely matter is our Director of Budget and Purchasing, Louise Miller. Welcome, Ms. Miller.
Thank you. So the purpose of this appropriation is so that we can encumber funds as required by law in order to purchase this apparatus, the replacement of the self-contained breathing apparatus for the firefighters. So this really is not an appropriation for the purchase, but rather pending the grant and until the grant cycle goes through, we do not know what the exact amount that will be needed from Free Cash is. And the fire chief is here to explain what the purpose of the self-contained breathing apparatus is, or why it needs to be replaced, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chief. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the city council.
That's why he has a uniform.
Frank Hillberti Jr., 6 Adams Circle, Medford, Fire Chief. The SCBA that we're looking to purchase are Scott Air Packs. We're looking to purchase 40 sets, 40 harnesses. In addition to the 40 harnesses, 120 bottles, so that each harness has three bottles. 125 facepieces, one for every member of the department. In addition to that, a, what's called a pack tracker system. It's a handheld receiver in case a firefighter is down or lost. You can use the wand, it's like a wand, to help locate a downed firefighter. And additional truck charges, one for each, one for each pack tracker, and voice amplifiers for the facepieces. That is the gist of it. There is some flow testing that comes with it, hydro testing for the bottles, and fit testing for the facepieces, for each-
testing for the facepieces, for each firefighter.
Very good. If you have any questions, be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you for coming down. And thank you for making this effort before, for your department to replace and update always all the equipment for their safety. Chair recognizes Counsel Knight.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, Ms. Miller and Chief Gilbridi, for being here this evening. Chief, can you tell me how old the current equipment is?
Current SCBAs are 1999. They were purchased, I think, May, June of 1999.
The SCBA for people that aren't firefighters is the mask and the oxygen tank that they wear when they go into a burning building.
Yep.
And the last time we've had them is from 1999. Mr. President, I don't think anybody behind this rail drives a car from 1999. I think that this is a good appropriation and something that we should support, especially based on the fact that we're going to get a 90% reimbursement from the government, or up to a 90% reimbursement from the government, God willing. So with that being said, Mr. President, I think this is a good paper to move on. I think that it's going to make our firefighters safer and that it should be supported.
Very good. So on the motion approved by Council Knight, Counsel Scarpelli.
If I can, thank you, Chief, for coming out tonight. Just a question since I have you here. One thing I've been reading, it was on social media, I read an article about a firefighter who came home with, after a fire, and they talked about what was left after his, he took his gear off, and the chemicals still left on his person and how dangerous that is. Something that I know that was mentioned in the past, there was washer and dryer at each station. Is that something that's difficult to do? Is it something we can?
We have currently one washer and dryer at headquarters. We don't have any in the outlying stations. I hope to be before you in the near future to purchase a second set of firefighting gear for each of the firefighters, and in addition to a washer and dryer for each station.
Okay. Thank you very much. I fully support this endeavor, and I appreciate your time. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome. So on the motion approved by Council Knight, seconded by Counsel Scarpelli, Counsel Marks.
Thank you. Chief, you just referred to a second set of turnout gear?
Yes.
It was, I believe, two years ago during budget that a second set of turnout gear was actually made a promise by then-Mayor McGlynn to supply this. Why have we not seen this? I asked this, I believe it was two weeks ago, and I was told, we went into great detail about the need, first of all, for a second set of turnout gear. The fact that many, especially the newcomers, some of the old timers had two sets, but many of the newcomers didn't have a second set. Why are we at this point where we don't have a second set?
Most of the department does have a second set, most do, because we just recently bought a brand-new set for everyone. Okay? They're about a year to a year and a half old maximum. And the sets, the gear that they had prior to that, some of them are six years old, seven years old, some are 10 years old, and 10 years old is the limit. So they do have those that they can use in a pinch, but I'm looking to buy a brand-new set for everyone. And if I remember correctly, I'm not quite sure, when we did have that meeting a couple of years ago, the council was nice enough to appropriate the funds, and I think that was for the gear that we bought a year or so ago. I'm not sure if we had spoken about a second set at that time.
Yeah, the whole issue was surrounding a second set of gear, and many of the firefighters had a concern that they'll go out and they'll be in a fire, and then they have to wear the same gear that they just were in a fire with. So just off the top, you had, what percentage of the firefighters now don't have a second, assigned to them? I'm not talking about one assigned to a station, assigned to firefighters.
I think those with seven years or so on the job and greater do have a second set. Folks that we hired in September of '12, September of '13, they may, they don't.
So what percent is that of the force?
Well, we hired 10 in 2012, we hired seven in 2013, and just recently, last year, we hired three more. So you're looking at 10, how many?
30.
About 20 people?
So you're saying currently, right now, there's only 20 people that don't have a second set assigned to them?
Yes, assigned to them, yes. And like I say, most of the department does have it. A lot of the stuff is older, you know, seven years old, 10 years old, but they do have it.
Okay, and the walkie-talkies? How are the walkie-talkies working? Communication?
Radios? I don't have a problem.
There's no issue, there's no issue with the towers, there's no issue with the?
No, not, please, no.
So everything's been working fine?
Yes. Yep.
And any need for new trucks?
Yes, I'm looking for a ladder truck in the very near future, yes. Maybe an additional pump.
I saw yesterday in the snowstorm, the old fire pickup truck going around salt in the streets. Is that something that is?
That is a truck that the maintenance facility has. It was one of, it was one of the pickups that we had when I had the mechanic at my facility.
Right, but I've never, I've never seen it out salt in the streets. Is that something new?
That's something new to me, yeah. It's DPW, though, but they're using that vehicle.
So it's not one of your vehicles?
No, no.
Even though it says "Fire Department" on the side?
No.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay. On the motion approved by Counsel Knight, seconded by Counsel Scarpelli, roll call vote is required. Is it a first reading, Mr. Clerk, or is it an appropriate? So this is a vote, requires just one reading. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Counsel Caviello?
Yes.
Counsel Falco?
Yes.
Counsel Knight?
Yes.
Vice President, Counsel Marks?
Yes.
Counsel Scarpelli?
Yes.
President Del Rosso? Yes, with a vote of six in the affirmative with one absent, congratulations, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President.
The appropriation passes.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. Appreciate it, much appreciate it.
The records?
Mr. President, can we read the records?
Before we read the records, Counsel Marks, longtime Medford resident and Medford High School Spanish teacher, who we all know, Mrs. Lepore, just received the Mustang Spirit Award.
Yes.
Anytime that you receive an award, not only from your peers, but from students, I think says a lot about the teacher. And Mrs. Lepore has been an advisor for the Foreign Language Club for a number of years. She's been a Spanish teacher for over 20 years and also organizes the trips to Puerto Rico, Spain, Mexico, Cuba, and does a great job in?
Don't forget Italy.
In Italy, and I wish her well in her future endeavors and also want to congratulate her on this prestigious award.
So on the motion of congratulations?
Send a citation, please.
And that a citation be sent on behalf of the City Council, offered by Counsel Marks and seconded by Counselors?
If you can, pay the rubia, the acceptance citation, that'd be nicer.
And that we extend to the professora an invitation up to receive that citation. So on that motion, all those in favor, all those opposed? Congratulations. Counsel Scarpelli?
If I can, and I know that's? Please. Thank you for giving me one minute. I just wanted to talk about an evening last Friday night, night for the Russos, that, again, it was an outstanding turnout. Again, I want to thank my colleague, Avnight, for helping with the generous donation to the organization. We did a great job for the family, they were very happy. And again, it tells you how great Medford is, that when someone's in need, how great people rally around in one email, and many people came out to support, support the family. I just wanted to thank the City of Medford again for their generosity and their support.
Thank you very much, Counselor. That was a great event.
Thank you.
So the records of the meeting of March 29th, 2016, we'll pass to Counsel Caviello. Mr. Counselor, how'd you find those records?
Mr. President, it's been brought to my attention that there's an error in the records, and I will make a notation in here for the clerk to make the necessary change, then that they would be fine.
And so on the motion for one error to be amended?
It'll be 16-337.
On 16-357?
337.
337. On that motion, all those in favor, all those opposed? Mr. President, before you end the meeting? Oh, Counsel Marks, let me turn on your microphone, just a moment, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Myself and Counsel Caviello had the opportunity last week to attend the first meeting of a new neighborhood crime watch group in West Medford at the Shiloh Baptist Church. And there were probably over 100 residents there, and it was well-attended, and members of Medford's finest, the police department were present, and there were many concerns from area residents. As we all know, there's been a rash of home break-ins in the West Medford area. And according to the police department, since January, I'm sorry, I think it was March 15th of this year, Counsel, do you remember how many break-ins there were altogether?
12.
There were 12 break-ins with a number of them in the West Medford area. So residents are concerned on what's going on, ways they can help assist the police department. There was also a lot of discussion in bringing back community policing, which everyone behind this rail, I think, supports wholeheartedly. And I know there's another meeting coming up soon about creating a crime watch group that will actually go out and walk the neighborhood and be the eyes and ears of the police department, and also have a network where residents can notify each other. And I'm hoping that this will spring to other parts of the city, so we can now communicate from Wellington to North Medford, to South, to West Medford, to the hillside, and allow all these particular groups to network and assist the police in doing their job, Mr. President. But I want to thank the residents that turned out that night. It was a great showing, and there were a lot of concerns about issues taking place in the area. And I recommended, when I spoke, that if the residents would like to come up to the council meeting and speak before the council on some of the concerns they have. I know I've been asking for, I think it's three years now, to have a public safety summit. And I look back at some of my old records, Counsel Penta wasn't the only one to keep records for 30 years. I look back at some of my old records, and I found a resolution back, it was three years ago, and at the time, there was a rash of robberies in the city. And I think there was 87 house break-ins back some three years ago. And I asked for a public safety summit to sit down with the elected officials, sit down with public safety, and see what we can do. And to date, I've yet to get a call from Chief Sacco, I've yet to get a call from anyone from the administration about setting up a public safety. And I know you said you were going to work on setting something up, Mr. President, but this is a major concern. You know, when people feel like they're being followed, you know, when people are going to church and people know when they're going to church and their house gets robbed, that's a concern in this city. And when the police department states that this may be part of a ring that's operating in Brookline and some other communities, you know, of robberies, that's a major concern in this city. And I just don't feel the outcry, to be quite honest with that, I have to be frank. I don't feel the outcry from public safety officials in this community. And when residents say, you know, I don't see police coming up and down my street, and a police officer says, well, ma'am, you're not at your door seven days a week, 24 hours a day, I think is a lousy answer to give a resident. I really think that's a lousy answer to give a resident. So I think we have to do more, Mr. President, and maybe this could be a shot across the bow to the administration, as well as this council, to set this public safety forum up, so we can welcome residents and public safety officials to have a discussion and dialogue. There's nothing wrong with that. That's healthy, to discuss issues that we may be having in this community, Mr. President. I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Caviello?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, again, with the two of us were there, I mean, this was a hastily called meeting within a week, Mr. President, and they had well over 100 people there. And, you know, some of the things you heard was, there was a lot of break-ins, especially car break-ins, that weren't even, that the police didn't even know about, that had gone uncalled into the police. And again, and Counsel Marks is right, you know, they, they want to see more of a police presence on the streets, driving up and down, walking, and that was one of their, that was one of their biggest concerns. And there was even some people, they said they were, they were afraid to call the police, which I didn't understand, some of those comments that were made. So again, I would hope that Chief got the message that was sent to him, that there should be more cars going down there, especially during the night time, and even during the day. And again, you know, my message to them was, saying to the chief says, if you're not comfortable with something, call. If you see something that doesn't look right, call. Don't be afraid not to call. Call, say something. See something, say something. That's the only way to do it.
Thank you very much, Counselor. On the motion, Counsel?
President, just a fight quick. You triggered something off in my head. You know, one of the other issues that were brought up that night was residents were asking, well, why don't we see more police on the street? Why don't we see more visual patrols around? And they were told that due to budget cuts. So right away, myself and Rick were the only elected officials in the room, and the meeting turned to us. And I couldn't explain budget cuts for the police department. All I know is, for the last 20 years, taxes have been going up in the city. There's been no budget cuts that I know of, directly within the police department. You know, they should be calling for a list every year, that this council has been asking to increase the manpower, but it's not due to budget cuts, it's due to priorities. And if the police department had a priority of community policing and bringing back police on bicycles and motorcycles and maybe even foot patrol in certain areas, that would be the priority. So the excuse of budget cuts in the police department, I just don't buy. And also, the fact that it was a year and a half ago when the administration, as well as this council, voted to take a bulk of the responsibilities from the police department of ticketing, which is a major job, away from the police department, although they still have responsibilities, that was supposed to be to free them up to do these other activities, to make sure that they're out there and they're doing the networking and community policing, and not give them the menial stuff of going out tagging. And I don't see a difference, to be quite honest with you. So these are the things I think we have to sit down at a table and discuss, because, you know, the residents have every right to say, well, budget cuts, what's being cut? My taxes are going up every year. The administration, everything's going up around this city. What are we talking about cuts? Who's cutting the police department? It's not us. I haven't, I haven't asked for cuts in the police department, and I don't, I don't see that as an excuse. If the levels are low, the administration should be asking us every year, when the chief comes before us, I need men, I need more boots on the street, I need women and men on the streets. And then this council can act, or then this council can make recommendations. It's the same with cruisers. I mean, you're talking about police cruisers that have 90, 100, 120,000 miles. They're running seven days a week, 24 hours a day. That should be an automatic, every budget, there should be five or six cruisers that are put on in the budget process. You know, that should be, that's just a part of operating a city. And to me, we're falling short of the mark, and some of the excuses we're coming up with now with budget cuts and lack of manning, to me, you know, residents aren't going to buy this, and we need to sit down and discuss these issues, Mr. President.
Ma'am?
Thank you. Jean Martin, Ten Coming Street. This is a very, very, very complex issue, and it involves a whole host of issues. It's not as simple as, you know, let's just put some people on the street. It is very complex, and it needs a summit. Mr. Marks, you're absolutely right, because we need to look at police reform, and we do have too few officers, and it involves overtime, it involves details, it involves the numbers that we don't have. But it also involves police taking responsibility for themselves as well. And they're not going to like what I'm saying, but it's true, they need to be more proactive in this city. But they get mistreated, so it's easy to, they feel a little bit defensive. That said, and I agree, and I'm an advocate for the police, you know that, I'm up here every week, one thing that I would like to recommend is, and they're not going to like me for this, is putting a device on each cruiser that tracks where they go throughout the city. Because sometimes, and I've seen it myself, I know they're not going to like me, cruisers can be found behind buildings for a long period of time, they're just chilling out someplace. So that behavior needs to stop. They're exhausted. You know, there are reasons why they are not proactive in this city. There are reasons why they are not as proactive as they need to be. But at the same time, we do need to hold them accountable, but we can't hold them accountable till we give them what they need. So it's, it's... So, it's, it's, it's both. It's a balance of giving them all the resources they need, and then lifting up their spirits so that they'll want to be more proactive, and, and not so, you know, "Oh, well, I'm not going to answer that call." There are, I hear from people in Stop and Shop, "I'll call the police," and I never hear that go over the police scanner, that call that I just called in for a parked car that's been there for three days. It never goes out. So, there, there's somebody filtering the information through the, the station, and it's because if it's not dire, it doesn't go out. And that's the way that the, the police respond in a lot of positions, in a lot of conditions. But again, it is a complex issue, and it requires a summit. It is, I'm not bashing the police, please do not misunderstand that I am not bashing the police. The police are under a lot of stress and distress these days, but it is a give and take, and when we step up, they need to step up too. But we need to have that summit so that everybody's working on the same page. Thank you very much.
Thank you. On the motion of Counselor Scott Pelley to receive and place on file?
Brief comment. It's me again. Sharon D'Esso. I want to thank Counselors Caviello and especially Counselor Marks tonight for bringing up the subject of the Police Department. We, especially our neighbors too, we don't have complaints. We're very grateful for the time that the police extend to us, and their life is usually on the line, along with the Fire Department, who are so great when my parents were ill. But we had a suggestion, I just kind of slipped my mind, so thanks for bringing it up tonight, Mike. About a month or so ago, I was visiting a neighbor, and she said, you know, "You've got to be careful, because during the last two months, there've been," and I live right, right near Governor's Avenue on that side, Mass. Ave, "there were 13 car vandalisms in a period of about six weeks." So, I asked some of the other neighbors, they didn't know anything about it. Of course, most of us work during the day, and we don't see if there's a cruiser coming around, I'm sure there were. However, most of these vandalisms occurred during the night, in late, you know, in the middle of the night. Would it be suggestible, or is it your job, or is it the neighbor's job, to, at least if something does happen on like a high basis, can't they send out a, like a, a letter or something to the neighborhood saying, "Make sure your car is in the driveway before you go to bed, make sure you're checked, make sure that your car is locked"? Is that advisable, Counselor Marks? Would you think about something like that? And we do thank the police and firefighters again. Thank you.
Sharon brings up a great point, and I, I think a reverse 911 call would be adequate, especially to target certain areas. With that system, it has the capability of, you can notify particular neighborhoods, streets, wards, precincts, you can notify whatever section you like, and to me, that would be the intent of the reverse 911, to allow, when there was a rash of robberies in West Medford, they called the West Medford area, and feel to call other parts of the city. And in my opinion, you know, if there's robberies in one section of the city, I think the whole entire city should be on notice, because robbers are smart, they're not going to stay in the same neighborhood, they're going to move to a different section of the, the city. So, I think we could use the 911 for that purpose. But thank you, that's a great comment.
On the motion of Counselor Scott Pelley to receive and place on file, all those in favor, all those opposed. Motion, motion for adjournment by Counselor Scott Pelley, all those in favor, all those opposed. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all. This meeting was not broadcast.